From Monday, May 21st, 2012. The time is 7:10 to order. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Charles Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Martin Towns.
Here.
Francis Monroe here. Mark Richmond. Excellent. Michelle. Sorry. Michelle, call us when you're ready. Gerald Mero.
Here.
Terry Dusick.
Here.
Jerry Pacey.
Here.
We have...
Can we get it quiet in the audience, please? Mickey, please. Thank you.
Messi, welcome.
Bethner, messi. Quorum has been established, Madam Secretary.
Yes.
We have Good and Welfare. To begin with, Lily, can you come up and take the microphone? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I have a pro... I live in Idahois Building 3U. I live on the third floor. It is very hot there. It is also very hot in the laundry room. If you have a medical problem and you're trying to do your laundry, it is so hot you could almost pass out there. I had complained about this before, several months ago. I spoke to Frances, and I think she did put it to the Board of Directors. Anyway, it seemed to get a little better. Now, it is getting hot outside. It is unbelievable. When you come out of the elevator, the heat just greets you. I don't know whether this is a cost-cutting thing or whether there's something wrong with the air conditioning, but it is very uncomfortable. So, I'm just asking the Board of Directors if they can look into this and let me know what they find out. Thank you very much.
Hi, Jervis.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, Lily. When we have...
Can I say something?
Hold on, let me just reply, please.
Okay.
When we have problems like this, Lily, what I would suggest you do is we have two alternatives for you now. Three, actually. You can actually pick up your phone and phone the office and actually file a voice complaint. If you have a computer, you can go to our website now and actually do it right there and then. Or come into the office. And usually complaints of this nature are taken care of typically either the same day or within 24 hours. So, Jason, you take a note. Chad, you take a note. So, tomorrow, we'll look into it. Yes, Mickey?
Well, you know what I mean? People come... There's exhaust... There's exhaust in some people, you know, down in my building.
Yeah.
No, I am a...
We can't hear you. We do.
We can't hear.
Eh... What happened is some people gone and instead of exhaust, which they take the heat out, bring the...
Heat in, okay.
Because I have no disease and I check it, there's exhaust in.
We're gonna... In fact, a lot of the third-floor residents in all the buildings, thank you, Mickey, have come to express the same concern. And in fact, Mickey has a very good point, is that sometimes we bring in the hottie, the heat in, instead of exhausting it out. So, be very, very careful that when you do an exchange, an air exchange, you do an air exchange with "out" instead of "in." But the third floors are typically very hot, especially at this time of year. We have heat rising, and we also have the roofs that heat up quite a bit. So, yes, we will look into it.
I just want to say that the fans are vulnerable. They do not work properly. The knobs are done. You don't want to spin around.
Which fans are you talking about?
The fans from the window. The window on the laundry room.
Fine, okay. Jason, Chad, would you take a look at that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lily. All right. That was quick. Good and Welfare. Madam Secretary, we have the wave reading of the minutes of the previous meetings.
I'll read. All of the directors have been previously furnished with a copy of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 6th, 8th, 2012. I would like a motion to waive the reading of those minutes and accept them and approve them as presented.
I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and accept that.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Are there any objections? Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the President's message. And instead of me standing up or speaking whatever words I have, in lieu of this, I've invited Jonathan Lewy, our CEO of AMG, to step in for me and say a few words on behalf of AMG and the Association. Jonathan, grab a mic. There's one right there for you. It's the long cord.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Charles invited me to take his spot. I promised him I'd make it short and sweet, and I also took a few medications that would go smoothly. But...
I get bitter.
But it's now been officially 30 days, unofficially 45 days, that we've been at the property. We've uncovered and handled more than our fair share of challenges. But as far as transitions go, it's a little more difficult than most, but much of what we expected. As many of you are aware, we had initially some telephone challenges, and those were based on the fact that we had an overwhelming response of people calling the office, more than any four or five people could handle. So, we took some precautionary steps, and we opened up the phones on all our admin desks throughout the office to handle phones while the International Village was transitioning. And our call volume went from 10 to 15... 10 minutes for an average call to about 15 to 20 minutes for an average call. So, it was a little... It was a little overwhelming in the phone area, but we have added staff since, and things have started to quiet down, and everything's getting responded on a very timely basis like we wanted to. In terms of banking and ACH, one of the biggest challenges we had is we did not get the information we needed from the prior company until mid-May. And between the 7th and the 10th. And we had to then confirm with the banks to make sure that we did all the ACHs properly and did all the banking properly, but we're back on track with that. And I've been keeping the treasurer abreast and Mr. Fitzpatrick abreast of everything and where we are. And I believe I sent an email giving an update to all the Board of Directors. Most of you, hopefully, now have met or had a chance to meet Jason Levy, our property manager, and Chad Riddinger, the assistant manager. I understand that they're very responsive. They've been taking care of a lot of issues around the property. And the one particular issue I remember the most was when Gisele was standing in the back explaining about the horders in a couple of the buildings. And Jason will explain that, you know, you will see dumpsters out there right now. It's the first thing we address, and we got proposals on, and he will explain it in his manager's report. Are there any questions or concerns or suggestions that you have for me while we're...
At the last meeting, there was an accident with Axon washing the drivers. Particularly the drivers, who were staying in care of the line. They're working properly, with all labels numbered, organized, and now they're operating at the proper length of time. Good job.
Thank you, Terry. The next morning after I heard that complaint, I actually got a copy of the contract and I read through it. And I did find where they are in fact responsible for the maintenance of those machines. And then when the team came on board that week, we sent out a certified return receipt letter, putting them on notice, and Jason will also explain that in his manager's report.
I like how you labeled each machine by number, by, you know, so when you call it in, they know which machine to go to, instead of saying the third machine from the right and the left side, basically. Good job.
Yes, ma'am.
It's been fixed. And now we don't have 45 minutes. It's one hour for the dollar twenty-five. And I called many times. I said, "I lost it. My gross is not fine. I don't want my money back. I just want to come." They vacuumed, they cleaned, and the second floor is... Everything is fixed.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm telling you this. And the guys are wonderful, and I called, and I... I don't demand, I don't... I do, I don't scream. I don't... I ask.
Muchas gracias, señora.
You're very welcome, Mr..
Thank you, Mickey. Any other questions for Jonathan Lewy? Any other questions? Thank you, Jonathan. We're gonna move on. Appreciate that. We are now going to turn the microphone over to Jason Levy and have him make his manager's report. Why don't you stand at the lectern? That's much... That's better. Yeah, because I can give you a word.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, that was a first month. That was a first month.
Ah, come on.
No, it was very good. Actually, we're getting a lot accomplished. I hope everybody does recognize it. Thank you very much for your comments, actually. I'll get to it in the report on the machines, because that did take some time to wrap, you know, about a good week, but they went through and got everything labeled, so thank you.
Mr. Levy, but if you ask nicely, you called the office, Axon. I told them, "I'm using 250 to dry clothes, and it doesn't work, so I don't want my 250 back."
Right, okay.
It's been solved.
Come and fix it.
It's been solved, Mickey.
Okay, thank you.
It's solved.
Okay, thank you very much. As Jonathan had mentioned, with the financials, we...
I'm sorry?
Actually, I want to make this... Let's hear it.
Folks, a quick explanation of the financials. I'm sorry, I needed to butt in again. At the end of 2011, your financials have been compiled by NCS, the prime management company. The Board had concerns as to the accuracy, you know, verifiableness of the numbers. And what they did is they took the TOPS system that you already had from 2010, and they had the staff rebuild it all the way through 2011 and starting into 2012. When the auditors came, they took the numbers that were ending 12/31/2011 that had been produced by NCS. What we did is we cleaned up 2011. We found that our numbers did not match what they did. The staff did a nice job of putting all the numbers together. After we reconciled, we found quite a few variances. We spoke to the auditor, and they said, "That's probably right," because they never did any of the adjustments, audit adjusting entries for 2010 or 2011. So, where we are right now is that the auditor has given us instructions on how to adjust the books, so that we... That the beginning balance of 2012 matches the ending balance of 2011. That's what we're in the process of doing. And as soon as we do that, using the TOPS system, not the NCS system, as soon as we do that, we'll be able to produce a truly, not only a clean financial statement, but a, I think, one of the cleanest ones you've ever had at this property. Because what we're dealing... We produced a December financial, but it was based on the TOPS numbers, and it did not tie to what the auditor had done, ending 2010. Now, when you see the financial statement, which should be within... I'm guessing this week you will have a clean financial statement. It'll tie to exactly what the auditor says, and every month, by the 16th of the month, when the Board gets their financial statements, they'll be able to count on the numbers, and they'll know exactly where they are.
Jonathan, can you just stay up there for a second? I have a couple of questions for you. When you do have the final, would you be able to put that on our website, on the website?
Yes, it gets posted every month.
That's true.
I will say that the only thing that doesn't get posted is the accounts receivable aging, because there's a privacy issue.
Sure, I understand that. But the actual financials will be on the website?
Yes.
And could you provide a copy that we can put on our close circuit TV also?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I'm trying to understand. You were telling me that NCS gave us an audited statement, and when we looked at that audited statement, we found that it was not in sync with your work that you did.
No. No, that's not exactly what I said. You have an independent auditor, a CPA that is hired by the Board of Directors to independently audit the numbers that are produced by whoever's doing the bookkeeping. NCS was your bookkeeper. Their numbers were not in sync with what was recreated in TOPS. The reason for that, as explained by the auditor, was when an audit is done at the end of the year, they will give you a set of adjusting entries. It could range anywhere from 30 to 100 adjusting entries for little things that may have been missed or things that may need to be reclassified or things, you know, whatever it is. Those adjustments have to be made effective the first of the year, so that the rest of your year is tacked onto that, and you're tied to their audit. That wasn't done in 2010, that wasn't done in 2011.
What was it? The audit was...
The audit... No, the audit adjusting entries.
Adjusting?
By the bookkeeper was not done.
So, we paid for an audit, and the audit wasn't related to the work that was done before?
No. You paid for the audit, which was done, and it was fine. The audit was fine. The books that were turned over to the auditor did not have the adjusting entries from the prior year, which is why there was that variance between what NCS had produced and what the TOPS recreation produced.
The variance was only the audit, which... audited entries.
But that was considerable.
I know, but that was the only difference, so...
Well, there was...
Isn't that what an audit is? When you have your initial work for the year, and you want to have it for banks and other institutions, you want to have that work checked and audited, and then... I don't understand. It sounds like it's two separate things, the work being done. And you have books that were done by whoever did the bookkeeping, the company, then we hired an auditor to do the adjustments, and then the two were merged. Is that what you're telling me?
To an extent, yes. But there were other variances as well, but that's what's been...
I agree.
NCS, since I was involved in that, Jerry, NCS basically was an incompetent organization. And the unfortunate thing is that some of the numbers they produced were not factual. And our CPA recognized that they were not, and took the information that Gina provided them, which is our TOPS system, and was able to reconcile all the figures, so that the audit statement that we have is a true fact, not the numbers that were... They could not... They could not give us an audited statement, a full audited statement, based on the numbers that NCS provided us. We have no idea, Jerry. Honest to God, we have no idea. This is why we've had... NCS had deposits that were not made. They had checks that were not paid.
Didn't they have some responsibility?
They had, and unfortunately, we knew this months and months ago, and we tried to get rid of them months and months and months ago.
We haven't got to get rid of them.
Yeah.
Getting back our money that we paid them for doing...
We haven't paid them, Jerry.
You haven't paid them?
No. I stopped paying them back in January.
It's actually only after they found out that we were here that they sent a slew of financials, which we haven't really paid any attention to.
I refuse to pay their invoices, Jerry.
From January.
From January.
So, that's practically a full year we didn't pay them.
Yeah, but we had no control over that in those years, at that time.
If they do something that's not legal...
Yeah, but prior to this Board election, we didn't have the power to do that, Jerry.
We do now.
And they weren't paid since January.
We should be able to go back and get our money back for work that was done... I don't hate to use "fraud" though, maybe you say you don't know where the numbers came from.
No, we don't know where the numbers came from.
Somewhere.
Yeah. The only thing I know for sure is that when we started looking at the books and took the responsibility of the books and saw the work that they were doing, we just basically put a stop payment on all their invoices.
That's good. That's good. Congratulations. But I'm wondering about the tens of thousands of dollars that we paid them before.
It wasn't tens of thousands of dollars, but whatever it was, but whatever it was, around $4,000 a month.
Okay, and we're saying for two years, I heard...
No, one year. One year. They were... Yeah, they were chosen for one year. Yeah, yeah. So, we'll have to look at that, Jerry. Yeah, you're right. You're right. It was part of the waste of money that happened back then. Go ahead, Jason, continue. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. Okay. On to where we are, what we've done, and what we plan on doing in the community. First off, we were out at the pool area. We did have a violation on the pool come in. That violation is for resurfacing. They gave us until October 9th to resurface the pool or will be ordered to be closed. So, yes.
What does the violation say? Do you have the notice?
Yeah, I have the actual violation from the Board of Health.
Does it say... Does it say we need to resurface the entire pool?
Yes, and retile.
Online, I wrote that.
Yes.
Says that the entire pool?
The entire pool, resurface and retile.
Wow, okay.
Yes, I can provide that for you. I have it, yeah. I can email it to you guys.
What problem? Was that a regular yearly inspection? Or did someone report it something?
Actually, Jerry, we were assessed of that apparently last March, that this was going to happen, and nothing was done. Nothing was addressed since last March. And then the Health Department came in, I believe it was April, correct?
Correct.
And said, "Hey, we gave you prior warning almost a year ago, and you haven't done a thing. Now, you have six months to take care of it."
What was the cause of it, and what exactly is the problem? We're losing water?
Okay, no.
I look at the pool. I don't see anything to the naked eye. Where is the problem?
Okay, the problem, if you look at the bottom of the pool, and first of all, the pool is not in code today. So, it's a... There's a lot of grandfathered stuff, like the pool coat, the type of paint that's on it. You're not allowed to have painted numbers. There's a whole lot of things that you're not allowed to have. When you're inside the pool and you're looking at the side of the coping and you see the three feet from... That's not allowed to be painted on. You have paint over the coping, which is not allowed. There's a lot of things that aren't allowed now, and they have grandfathered that in, and they always will do that. They will grandfather things in until your next resurface or whatever you have to do, which is major work. So, apparently, last year, they had mentioned, and the Health Inspector also mentioned to me that this has been a while, and when she came over, she was actually coming to cure a violation that was on the spa, which I'll get to, on the outdoor spa. There was a violation. She was coming back to make sure that that was corrected, and she pointed out to me, "Did anybody tell you that in six months from..." Or less now, in October, that "I'm gonna close the pool"? I said, "Well, what do you mean? Who..." She said, "Well, this is why I'm being nice. I'm trying to tell you." She said, "Go, let's go pull out your last violation." And we pulled out the last violation, and she said, "Ah, you see?" Okay, it was a satisfactory... She said, "I gave you satisfactory, but it says clearly down there that upon the next inspection, must be resurfaced and retired." So, we just have to do it.
So, then, or close the pool?
Yes, or close the pool.
I'm still trying to understand.
Tell me.
Why? I understand that there are higher standards now, but the lower standards are grandfathered in, so we're fine since we're grandfathered. What is the precipitation for the new...
Okay, have you seen the bottom of the pool?
I look at it every day.
Okay, and do you see where you have uneven stuff and things that were patched and repaired? That's not legal. That's not legal.
That's not...
No. No, because that's where bacteria can grow.
Jason, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
This is the Health Inspector. This isn't just some random thing. They come and they look at pools. This is a multi-people community, and it has to be done.
Jason, can I make a suggestion?
Yes. The drains are covered.
Yep, a collect. Collect, I think, would be a great idea, Jason, if you email all the Board members a copy of the violations.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
And post the violation on the...
CCTV.
Okay, thank you.
How long will it take for them?
Okay, he did give us an approximation, because we had a pool company come out. They helped us prepare an RFP, which is the Request for Proposal with the standards that we need to have in there, and we have it out to bid right now. But the person that came out, who knows the city very well, is going to... He told us that it will take him two weeks.
Mickey.
It will take him two weeks to give the bid. He said, "When he does the work, it will be out for approximately four to five weeks of work." So, what... The best month apparently is September here, because we have to do it before October 9th. I would just... We're gonna discuss the time, but we sort of talked about it a little bit, because September is probably the better out of all the months right now to have the pool down. So, this is where we're going with it, but we don't have the bids yet to really do a formalization of that. This is just an overview, so everybody can understand what's happening. Okay? As Jonathan had mentioned, the website, that is where we would like everybody to be directing their questions, comments, anything that they have. A lot of people have been using it. We've seen tremendous results. They've been emailing back, "Wow." So, we are able to effectively get back to people quickly when they are emailing, and they can do that from work if they want. They don't have to worry about coming in. However, we do welcome people to come in. We welcome people to call. Another... So, the website will be able to handle that. It will be able to handle financial reporting, the way we communicate everything to the village. And you also can do your payments from there soon. We're setting up the system so that it can separate out the special assessment versus the maintenance. This is the only reason why it can't be paid with a credit card online right now, because we have to be able to separate that, and the bank is working with us on that, because it's not a typical situation.
What's the website?
Oh, it's www internalsvillage.com.
How can you talk to her enough to me?
What can I help you with?
Mickey, Mickey, you have a question?
I'm sorry?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Because I live in Bordeaux, F, and I asked for it to you, Mr. Levy.
Okay, yes.
It's not Levy, it's Levy.
Well, my name is Levy, so...
I'm Muslim.
Okay.
They don't... No sign.
No problem.
But let me tell you. You know how many hours they spend on the fountain? I live facing the fountain, Bordeaux, F, there. It's over and over, cleaning and wiping.
Mickey, I'm sorry to be rude. Mickey, I'm sorry, but we're not talking about the fountain there. We're talking about the... We're talking about the website right now.
They have time to spend trying to clean the bathroom.
Mickey, 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 please. Mickey, please.
I am a very calm person.
Mickey, 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 you're in.
I'm talking to the lady.
Not now. Not now, after the meeting.
Let me tell you one thing. Why can't they spend that time cleaning the fountain? Cleaning the pool?
Okay, thank you. Yes, we'll take care of that. Okay, yes.
You don't know what you're going to get.
Are you talking about the pool? Oh, yeah, no, it's out to bid now.
It's out to bid now.
We'll have the bid in two weeks. It takes some time to put it together. Three bids, absolutely.
You're three minutes behind. You're three minutes behind the thought, Jerry. Okay, go on with the website.
Okay, so we have the website. Everybody, so you have the website. Okay, good. Onto landscaping and lights. We've instituted a standard operating procedure now, where security and maintenance work together with doing several different reports on the property. One of them is lights. So, I'm hoping that people do see the improvement on the lights. It is obviously a work in progress. Every week, they walk around. At nighttime, we get the report from Elwood. And then George goes with his team and does the replacements or looks at what the problem is, orders, and does what he needs to do for those replacements. Anything that is going to be a factor of large amounts of money, that will be something that will be dealt with accordingly. But as the regular maintenance items are coming up with that, we're handling those. As an example, the lights along the tennis courts were all out. And those are now back working because of these types of reports. We're doing that with the cleanliness, with the cleanliness of all the different individual buildings. So, we have the reporting and the operating procedures in place for the two departments to be working together. We do have some staff, which I'll get into later, and reports and staffing issues that we're working on. But the first thing to do is get yourself and bring the Village to a standard operating level of where we want to be, what we want to do, and then make sure that we follow through and staff it to do it. So, this is how we're handling landscape lights and several other projects throughout. Okay. A lot of people were asking about the different contracts. Orkin is our pest control company. We have worked together with them now to get into a large number of units. And now, where they weren't doing the common areas, they're now including the common areas in the contract at no additional charge to do each building, corridors, and exteriors, laundry rooms, trash rooms. Because it wasn't listed, it wasn't being done. Now, it's being done, and it's actually in the contract. So, that is something that we should see a big improvement upon. The Axon, which was mentioned before, that was already taken care of. We sent out over 200 violation notices for different areas, ranging from screens to dogs to mats outside, all the different types of violations that there could be. We do it in a very standardized process, so that every single person who is not following is going to get these violation notices. It's not going to be selective. It's going to be across the board. Some people who aren't used to getting that, we've dealt with that, for those of you who are in the room. And so, it's not something that we're just picking on one person. This is blanket. So, these violations are going to help us to bring a consistency throughout the community. We repaired the hot... We got a new hot water heater over here in the spa area. This month, there were tile trip hazards in New Yorkshire and the St. Moritz laundry rooms, which were repaired temporarily to remove the hazard. And once we get out of interlocking, we will go back and we will do that more permanent. AT&amp;T bill review. There's a lot of bills that we're wrapping our hands around now that we're getting... We're going through very methodically, because there are areas where we are able to save a tremendous amount of money, where we were spending too much on certain bills or we weren't getting what we were paying for on certain bills. One of them is that AT&amp;T bill, which we will see approximately a $9,600 credit come back from that, because there were things that just shouldn't have been there. And when we went back over the last month, that's what we shouldn't have paid on that bill. So, that will be coming back. We already went over our software system with billing. We changed our process with our requests, our maintenance requests, so they're being tracked in the computer. And as every time somebody calls in or puts something on the website, it will be put in the computer. George picks up these orders. He has a time that it has to be done or a date that it has to be completed by. Every morning, that date will pop up on our computer, what had to be done. And if it wasn't done, we follow up on why or we follow up to make sure it was done, which has been going very well. So, thank you for that. We have security walking through the clubhouse twice a day now. They are checking for areas that aren't being used, so we don't have to have the lights on. They're checking to make sure that the pool furniture is organized, because these are actual requests that have come in, which is why I'm talking about this. So, now, everything is being straightened out now with the pool chairs and the cleanliness of the area. Any pool chairs that have problems and need a repair are put on a work order, so it can be taken care of and fixed. One of those things that the two departments are working together with. The security logs. We now have security logs available in the office. Every morning, Elwood brings in his reports, puts them in the correct binders. So, anytime we need to go back and to check on anything that happened that we're able to check on or that was reported or that we found, we can always go back to those reports and we can see what's happening. Yes.
Skip over D2 Comcast.
Ah, okay, I'm sorry.
And I have a question on that.
Yes.
The last sentence, the next last sentence. You said you did raise a question of Comcast suspending services to the building communities. And is unable to do that with their contracts? And my question is, why are they unable to do that? I know that they can suspend service to any one unit that doesn't pay then what's coming to then, you know, in addition to what you pay its charges. I'm sure, therefore, they can reach each unit independently, and they could suspend service unless they're not legally allowed to suspend service. And by suspending service, that might prompt someone to pay a bill. I mean, the real trick is to get them to suspend service and also reduce our bill. But I guess that's not in the contract. It's a 10-year contract. And next time you go through a contract, you need a company that is able to do that. There's no point in giving people a service that they're not paying for in their maintenance. And that's what I've been pushing for with Comcast, that these three companies, they try to give... I mean, that would be the perfect thing.
What I can tell you is, when I did speak with them, she did send me an email with an article regarding this. The attorney, the prior attorney, also sent an article.
Prior?
No, a prior... Yeah, the prior one. Polyakov? I think it was. Yeah, Dr. Polyakov. Okay, and he actually was the one that wrote the opinion. And the opinion, which was that they can't... The bulk contracts, they can't go and take. It's our responsibility to collect that money. So, because we pay it to them. It's our responsibility to collect it.
Jason, may I just intercede for a second? The Inverary Association, Jerry, which is all the condominiums, actually went to Comcast last year with this very request, because all of them have a bulk contract, or the majority do. And Comcast absolutely refused to do it.
Do they ask them to reduce the fees for the people who are in pain? Or do they just simply ask them to shut off the service?
Shut off the service.
Just shut off.
Shut off.
Now, we can refuse entry into the clubhouse to the people who are going.
Correct.
But we can't tell them, well, we're paying...
That's correct. Because it's not in the contract. The bulk contracts that were negotiated, not only here at the Village, but for all the other associations in Inverary to have Comcast, have that particular nuisance in them.
Just very quickly, I think I can help. I've negotiated multiple, like 3,000, 4,000 unit bulk contracts. One of the things that's going on right now is everyone is waiting to see what happens to a court case that's taking place in Orlando, where somebody is fighting this very thing. You had an association that did cut off service, and the lawsuit was filed. And it appears that it's going to fall in the favor of the unit owner, whose service was shut off. There is some argument that cable TV can't be considered a utility, and that's what the primary argument is all about. The other thing is to remember is regardless... When you have a bulk contract, yes, Comcast has to expend money to send someone out to do the shut off right at the unit. But they're going to charge you regardless. They did offer to do that in a couple of cases. But because of the lawsuit, these different communities, one of which is 3,700 homes that we manage, opted to hold off. And we've had it from good counsel as well as numerous bulk contract negotiators to say that this is probably one of the least exciting ways to try and collect money, because it really doesn't have an effect because of all the liability that you might be facing. It just doesn't seem to be worth it.
I'm not even talking about collecting money. I'm talking about just turning off the service. It's still paying to turn you off the service just to make a meaningful profit for people who are actually in the business by doing the maintenance. So, no, that's a different fight. Not paying. I mean, I don't think we should pay. I think it should be turned off for not paying. But I'm not even talking about not paying. I'm saying paying, but make it like we're not letting people in the clubhouse who don't pay their maintenance. They should also have our service. Now, if you're calling the argument is the television is a utility, then that might be an argument. It doesn't make any sense to me, but it's an argument.
Well, yeah, the bottom line is is that they absolutely refuse to do what we've asked them to do.
Yes, I'm sorry.
On the Comcast issue, how much longer do we have on the contract?
Eight years.
Eight years.
And are there companies out there that will provide similar services and yet be selected as a service?
That's not true.
That's not true.
Not true.
In any of the discussions that you're aware of with Comcast, was the topic of switching from Showtime back to HBO, was that ever discussed?
No. Not in any conversations I had.
Why don't you have that conversation?
You want to switch back to HBO, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Jason, move on, please.
Yes.
Yes, hold on, Jason. Colette has a question.
I had heard, I don't know. I didn't have any feedback to say. I just heard that in this contract, they were going to do wiring upgrades in the community. Is that in part of the...
It's not, no. What's in the contract? Let me go back to what I put in here. What's in... And I'm sorry that I went from Orkin to Axon. I skipped that. It basically says that we have the updated channel lineups. And we're going to post that stuff on the CCTV. Once we get... When I get to CCTV, it'll explain it more. But they're providing one digital receiver, two digital adapters, and three remote controls that are able to receive that bulk service. That's what's in the contract. If somebody goes and wants HDTV... Sorry, I think. They can't even use the one that's included. It will be charged for a receiver. So, then it goes away. Okay.
I got a lot of surface, and I love the surface.
Okay, the fire alarm at the Atoise system is on its final inspection. So, we do have something that needs to be voted on tonight, which you'll see in the back of your package.
I'm sorry, Jason. I'd like you to talk about the interlocking right now.
Okay. The interlocking common areas. The maintenance department's working on the common areas right now. They have completed about 80% of the project. And they have wallpaper to do, lighting to do. They've already done a lot of the wallpaper. They have completed a lot of the lighting.
One, one and a half floors, just the first floor.
One and a half floors?
One and a half of the first floor. And the lighting, to me, seems like it's all done.
Okay.
But they have to do another... The second floor and the third floor of the wallpaper, plus the moldings?
And yes, I was going to say the moldings that are on the bottom and the carpeting and the lobby. But yes, but these types of the walls that were being prepared and what was being prepared takes the longest amount of time. What has to be finished now is the wallpaper, the carpeting, the finished stuff.
Right.
So, this will probably be approximately about two weeks, would you say? About two weeks, two to threes, before we're complete with that building.
So, we should be done by Christmas. All right, Sandy.
Okay. So, back to the Atoise. So, we are going to finish with the alarm system, and you will vote on doing the next building, which is Grenoble, which you'll see at the end of your packet. Bulching is being done on a regular basis. The roof maintenance is being done on a regular basis, cleaning out the gutters, cleaning out the tops. And we have that on our maintenance program plan. As mentioned earlier, the two hoarding units, O1A and East 1C, are being completed this week. The first one will be complete this week. That's what you see, the dumpster out in front of the Orleans. And then we'll move over to the Atoise. It takes approximately four to five days just to do one of these. So, they're thinking that they'll be complete with one before the end of this week and start the other one maybe at the end of the week or the beginning of the next. And then by the end of next week, we'll be finished with those two units. The estate, yes. And they're paying it completely. We're not laying out the money. They're getting the bill directly. We had Consulting Florida Projects come out to give us a bid on what... On the measurements and on the built drawings for the rest of the buildings and to give us pricing for the rest of the buildings for the renovation, to complete the renovation on the remaining buildings. It's very, very important, because it's very, very difficult to run the property with the maintenance staff doing these renovations, because the maintenance staff needs to keep up with what needs to happen on the property. And if they're in the buildings doing the renovations, there's other things... This is, I think, part of what we've seen around the Village that was being neglected is really a staff issue, because they're not there. And really, there are ways that you can always improve staff, but there are just certain things you have to have the staff doing. You have to have the staff to do it. So, this is one of the reasons why it's imperative that we at least get those bids, see what it's costing us from a labor standpoint and a community standpoint versus what it would cost to have somebody come in and do it. So, we'll have those bids shorted.
I understand. Is that being done on a building-by-building basis or is that being done on a prototype basis?
It's a prototype.
So, therefore, how are they going to be going forward? Are they going to be looking at each of the ones that are not done and saying, well, this floor looks good, so we're not going to put money into the floor, we'll put money into something else? We're just going to do everything the same?
No, Jason, may I answer that? What we did, Jerry, is we took the worst building that we have to do, which is the Grenoble, which needs a complete refit. And from that, we will go to building to building and determine what we will renovate. There are certain buildings where tiles don't have to be changed. There are certain buildings where carpets don't have to be replaced. There are certain that ceiling doesn't have to be redone. So, the Grenoble basically is a complete renovation building. And once we have the cost in there, then we can use that as our template for all the other buildings. And you know, you and I had an earlier conversation, Jerry, where you go into Nottingham, for instance, New Yorkshire. They have gorgeous tile in the lobby. And why in Dickens' name would you want to change it?
My question with this whole deal going forward is that the money that we're spending is that the money that we're spending is coming from all of us, okay? Well, Aedelice isn't paying for the renovations, and Interlock isn't paying for the renovations. It's coming from the associations. So it would appear to me that you would be wanting to spend approximately the same amount of money on each building.
Why would you want to do that, Jerry?
I think in a question of fairness.
Why would you want to do that?
It's beautification, this is not roofs.
It's a matter of need, not a...
No, no, it's not, it's not a question of need.
It's a matter of being, Jerry, it's a matter of being wise with the money, all right? If Building A needs twenty thousand dollars of renovations, and Building C needs forty thousand dollars of renovation, that's the way it's going to be done.
See, I don't look at it that way. I don't look at it that way.
Well, okay.
The money is coming from the treasury, okay? And the people are paying their maintenance, and people are paying assessments. And in fairness to everybody that owns here, I would think the same amount of money. I'm not talking about problems that we have that need to be addressed.
Well, it sounds to me, Jerry, that this is a subject that we need a full discussion on, and tonight's not tonight.
I agree, we need a full discussion, and we never, and we never had a full discussion.
And we will have a full discussion on this, but not tonight. Move on, Jason, thank you. Thanks, Jerry. This time I'd actually have to agree with Charles. There is a difference between need and what you say is fairness, okay? There was a need to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on ledges that I felt weren't necessary on two buildings. The Yorkshire, I think it was around two to three hundred thousand to redo the ledges. All the ledges on all the buildings were not in real good shape. I think that was the figure.
What was ledges?
The ledges, the little balcony ledge. They got all new ledges on the Yorkshire and the Heidelberg, okay? So there is a difference between need and fairness, okay? I don't even think they needed it. Their ledges were no different than ours, but they felt they needed it, and they got it, nobody else got the ledges.
I agree with you, I think that that was wrong, and I don't want to continue that same wrong policy. The thing that should have been done in that case was to fix the balconies.
But they fixed, they fixed the ones that they felt needed at the worst, needed at the most.
I understand that, why would we continue with that same wrong policy?
Because obvious, no, I'm not, because obvious, it was done out of need. They needed it.
Did you agree with that?
Gentlemen, gentlemen, please. A gentleman, please. Jerry, please, order, please, please. We are not going to have this discussion tonight.
Okay.
This is something that we need to have another full discussion on between need and fairness. And we'll have that discussion, but not tonight. Jason, move on.
Okay, here we go. Office staffing, Debbie continues with us, as you see. Gina has been moved to the AMG corporate office. We will not be needing, as you can see, we don't need Christina anymore because we, that's part of the AMG contract, are the accounting functions. Elwood remains as the director of security, as well as George in charge of maintenance and janitorial support and needs, okay? Financials, I don't need to go over because you went over that. Pool resurfacing, I already discussed. Security cameras, we are currently discussing and getting out the RFP for the bids on security cameras throughout the complex. Now, what we're doing is we're doing it in two steps. We'll get two different types of bids so that it can be presented and it can be discussed amongst the board, which, one of which puts nine cameras in a building, one of which puts eighteen cameras in a building. The only difference between the two, one covers all entrances and exits, the mailroom, the laundry room, the two laundry rooms, the trash room. The other bid, which makes it eighteen cameras, includes full coverage on all three floors, completely. So we'll have the opportunity to visit that once we receive the bids back, the RFP out and the bids back.
Jason, I just want to make everybody aware, we're going, the next few items that Jason is bringing to our attention is strictly for our understanding of what it would cost us is not what we're going to be doing.
Correct.
All right? Until such time as we have a better financial position, this is just for us and for you people to have an understanding how much money we need to take care of this. This is not something that we're going to be doing tomorrow, okay?
Okay, so that was for the security cameras. Jonathan wants to touch on the next one.
Really quickly on the resident access system. This is more of a wish list, but one of the things that needs to be done is we need to get an understanding as to the clean database of who we have living here. And one of the ways to do that is to either change the access system or to implement parking stickers or something along those lines. But what you do is you purge your entire database. Everyone has to fill out a form. They have to show either proof of ownership, or they have to show you a legitimate lease. Then we have an idea of who's living in the community. So this is really the whole process. We've attached for the board's review a sample letter that would go out, the standard operating procedure on how it would be implemented, and the forms that would need to be filled out. But we've done this in numerous communities. We just finished this at the Pinnacle and several other communities. And it gives us a handle on who's living there, because everyone has to be signed off on, you take pictures. They have the same resident ID that they use to enter the place, so it has a reason for them to carry it because it's their key. It also allows easy on-off access, so if somebody's not supposed to come in here, it gets turned off. And they can even use that to enter the community through the gate system. So it's something we're talking to the board about down the road.
Thank you. Wall security behind the Marseille, where we have people jumping the wall and coming into the community there. We already have one of the bids in, we'll have two more this week, between putting either Bougainvillea, ficus, and two other types of plants. So that is going to also be discussed in the future, once we have those bids in. Same, along the lines with security are the speed humps that will help that tire drag in the back. It's like a raceway back over there, behind those buildings, and throughout the community. So we have those bids coming in as well. One of them, I believe, came in, and we have two more that are about to come in. So we'll be presenting those as well for the board discussion.
Is there a priority? There's one, two, three, four, five, six items that Charles listed are future things that we don't have money for. I'm assuming the pool resurfacing is something that you have money for, that you're going to find money for. So that's probably priority number one. How do the other things stand as far as priorities concerned?
Jerry, we have not prioritized anything, to be honest with you. The two things that are on our top list right now is the resurfacing of the pool and the alarm systems. That right now is what our priority is. We haven't even put this to the board and say, okay, what's number one, what's number two, what's number three? At some point in time in the very near future, we'll have to do that.
The alarm system isn't even here.
The alarm system is coming up.
The alarm systems are the ones that are gradual?
Yeah, I know, you just mentioned earlier.
The alarm system contract is on the agenda for a vote tonight.
Does it have fire alarm?
That's the fire alarm systems in the one building, the Grenoble.
Okay. So the next thing that you're going to actually vote on, besides the fire system, is the submetering of the pool. Which is very, very important to submeter the pool water-wise, because when you, especially when we go to empty that pool, we're paying, because it's not submetered, it's paid, the water that goes out is paid as if it was somebody flushing the toilet, and that's probably the most expensive part of your bill. So they do allow for you to submeter the pool, and then you're built completely different on the pool. So this is very, very important to change out. It's a pretty easy change out, you'll see the bid attached. And that is the reason why it's very necessary to do it and as soon as possible.
What's the projected savings, either percentage-wise or dollar-wise?
Actually, we didn't work out the savings yet because we are just figuring out how much for the year the pool was losing prior to fixing the pool. And now we have to find out what it's losing now, and then, after the resurface, it'll lose even less. So the projected savings, I can email and have to you within the next four or five days, but we haven't finished that analysis.
Is it worth twelve hundred and eighty dollars?
Yes, I think it's worth twelve eighty.
I assume you'll be sending it over?
Yes, of course, yes.
That's the cost of submitting, yeah, for submitting the pool.
Yes.
We're not, we're not discussing that today because we don't have all the information.
Yeah, we have, we have the information coming in now. Yeah, we have, we have the information coming in now. I wrote a little blurb under 3OI, so you can see the blurb, 3OI. It's the one right before where I was reading, at the bottom of the page. Okay, so that's there, but we're not there yet. So I want to be able to give you the things that we're, that we're ready to present.
Can you move on, Jason, please?
The CCTV is going to be our way to communicate to the entire community everything that's happening, and it will be done on a regular basis. Signage out front, we're getting bids for, for the main entrance sign. Office hours is one thing that we would like the board to talk about tonight as well, as everybody can understand the type of calls and how busy the office is. Right now, the office is closed from twelve thirty till one o'clock, which is when the office has lunch. I want to make the office hours from twelve to one to be off. The first half hour, working, but not answering the phones and taking the walk-ins to catch up with things so that the people in the office are able to actually take a break during the day, because they don't take one. So they need to be able to have a half hour of quiet time so that they can get themselves in order, and then take a break, and then open the doors, ready, clean with the stuff off their desks. So this is why this was put on the agenda.
Back to signage. I wasn't aware that there were complaints about the signage. Signage to the National Village is not something we want to put money into?
It's something that we're getting a price, but it's not a high priority, Jerry. There are some people have asked for it, and we said, why not? It doesn't cost us anything to get a bid.
Yeah, we're just getting bids from...
I wasn't aware.
Yeah, we're just, just somebody came up and said, you know, why don't we get a bid on this? And we said, sure, why not?
If we get a lot of people asking for certain, one particular thing, we'll try and react the best we can by getting bids, because it doesn't cost us anything. Okay. We're reopening up the drop box, so at night you can put things into the box that you need to communicate if you want to drop off anything for the association.
Is that the one that goes to the office and up this little box that you can stick your whole hand in?
Yeah, it's the one that drops into the office.
It's like a little nail slot, and it goes down a chute, okay? The pool pump room, anybody who has spent any time in this area, I don't know, but this pool pump room has been red-tagged since two thousand nine.
Can you explain, Jason, what red tag means?
Okay, it means that it is an unsafe area. It means that you're not supposed to be in there or operating. They've allowed it because we have temporary, since two thousand nine, but we have temporary stanchions and supports holding the ceiling. So this is an absolute safety, security issue that must be handled. So we're going to have AMG's project management team come in, tell us what we need to do, advise us what we need to do, and then we'll present it. But it's something that it's important for you to know, that we have to work on that pretty quickly. I mean, it may seem like why, it's been there since two thousand nine, but this is a real liability, big liability for the association. We do have a situation with white fly, which everywhere in South Florida you have a situation with white fly on your ficus plants and what have you. And we are in the process of getting bids now. We do have a bid that I can, it's incredible, that we'll be able to even do it for less than we're doing it for ourselves, which we are researching to make sure. It is warranted for a whole year, so we're researching it. But this is something that we do need to take care of, so we will get back with you on that. I'm sorry, we can't do it ourselves with, for liability reasons, so, yeah.
Is that a two-step plan where they put stuff into the ground as well as spray?
They do granular, and they also do spray, yeah. Okay, door identification, as we go through, and we are spending this, and by the way, this is the longest management report you'll probably get from me, this one or the next one, maybe, because this is the first time we're digging into a lot of stuff, so forgive me.
You're doing a great job, continue.
For going too long, okay.
Is there any way that this report can be given to the director of the district mayor or so before?
Absolutely.
To get an opportunity to read it and be more prepared?
Yes, absolutely.
In fact, Jerry, we're going to have it from now on on Fridays, so we have the weekend to look over it. Yeah.
Yes. Door identifications, as we walk through the properties, we're finding, well, when I walk through the property, I want to be able to know, at least from a safety and security standpoint, I know what every door is, and I have a key to every door. I think everybody wants the association to know what every door is and have a key for every door. As I walk through the buildings, I'm seeing doors that are blank with locks on them. I have no idea what's behind the door, they don't know what's behind the door. So we are going to have, we're going to figure out, however we need to figure it out, we will figure out how to get into those doors, and we will get, you know, plaques that will be put on those doors, just like the laundry room, just like any other room, whatever that room may be. Just blank doors in the hallways, in the hallways, just empty, just doors that don't say anything, white doors.
We have, Jerry, in certain buildings, in fact, all the buildings, excuse me, Sandy?
No, I was going to tell them, I have a storage room that is a blank.
Yes.
What most of these are?
There are storage rooms that people just accommodated themselves with over the years, and we need to address that, kind of, who is, and what...
I'm saying, it's not, you're not talking about the condos and stuff?
No.
Doors other than the...
Right.
Yes, other than the...
Storage closets, storage closets.
So people store things in there?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so...
So we're going to identify them, we want to identify them, and find out who is using them, and then we'll come to the board with some sort of policy on how we're going to address that, correct, Jason?
Yes.
Thank you.
However, however they're being used, we're going to need to address it, because we need to have the keys. Oh, by the, you mean that's in the mailroom?
Yeah.
No, you know what, you know what, this is a strange thing. Let me tell you a story. This is really, really strange. It's going to take sixty seconds. Every time we put up a new list, it disappears within, not twelve hours, not six hours, but within a half an hour after we put up a new list, it disappears. That has not been the case, but has been the case for the last year, in all buildings. Sorry, not all buildings, some buildings. Marvin, I know what happened, it's happened in the Bordeaux a couple of times. And I think, I think the only solution is, basically, is to have a keyed, a keyed, a keyed one, that's all. Jason, Chad, why don't you make a note that, find out, at least get a costing on what it costs to have a keyed panel, display, a keyed display?
By the mailrooms, inside the...
Inside mailrooms.
Right.
In fact, there was a lady from the Orleans that came in a couple of weeks ago, and she said, can I have a list? And I said, yes, we can, we'll provide it for you. And she said, no, no, she said, can I have six of them? I said, why do you want six? She said, well, it'll last a week.
Okay, so you need something secure, okay. We'll look into that for you. Key control, the keys, it's very important. In order to properly manage the community, you need to have a handle on everybody, each person who is in each unit, a proper list, whether it's leased, whether it's owned, and you need to have a key to every unit. For some reason, over the years, it was explained to me that some people were able to opt out of giving a key, but that is not the case. We need keys to every single unit. And it needs to be controlled. Now, it's not very, it's not expensive to control it. When I put down here, just so that you understand that we're getting a bid for automatic key storage, there's a lot of units here, there's a lot of keys for this place. So by having an automatic key storage unit where you put in what you want, and it comes down, and you have your key there, you know where it is, you know what's happening, because it's very important to keep a control over everything that's happening and every door that you have. It's just critical. So this is something that, yes, may be a wish list, but it's something that's important. So something for you to discuss as we get the bids in. The last item that I'll mention is the housekeeping, because there were a lot of calls regarding that for some particular buildings, more than others. We did have some staffing turnover in the housekeeping area. So what we are, what we have done, we actually have some, one person that has already been accepted, and is just going through the pre-employment process with paperwork. So we're hoping by the end of the week that will be complete, and either by the end of the week or the beginning of next week, that person will start. We will, we have a procedure in place on checking and to maintain all the buildings properly. Aedelice, there were a lot of complaints coming from the Aedelice. I think a lot of it stemmed from the fire alarm that is being put in, and there's a lot of dust being generated from that. There were ceiling tiles that were disturbed because of that. So if you're hearing issues regarding that, this is the reason why. They had their final inspection today. They had their final inspection today. They didn't come back in, so I don't know what happened with it, if they have to come back tomorrow. Sometimes it takes a couple of days for the final inspections. And then once that's complete, we will replace the tiles in that and everything will hopefully go back to normal in that building. And we are discussing for the Grenoble, the security to, the security company is putting in that, the fire system, to keep a better handle on their own people while we spend a little extra time taking care of that building while that process is being completed.
Thank you, Jason. That was comprehensive and certainly a lot to digest. Thank you very much.
In our documents, it clearly states that any interior walls needs approval to move walls inside your units. A lot of our owners have moved walls inside their units and done what they wanted without going to the board.
Well, what we'll do is we'll take a look and make a note of that so we can go through the docs and then we can address on a violation basis. Yes. Yes.
Just to clarify, you said we seem going to be getting a complete outdoor pool evaluation, including letting us know how much we saved by the previous leak fix, how much we expect to save by the next one?
Yes.
And the other question, the security logs that we keep, who has access to them?
They are, they're in the association. And this is, this is association documents. Now, the only thing that I would, I will do is, once, if someone needs to see something, the document, association documents, they place their request and we have them in the office in a binder and we can provide access for people to see. If it's now, 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 certain, there are, security reports are also a sensitive nature. So this is more a board, a board would be able to go in and have easy access to it, but we would have to have intervention to ensure whatever, if someone's coming in, they're not just being handed a book. It would be a specific request on a, if it's a specific date and we can, we would go in and look on that specific date, look at the log, and then be able to ascertain what can, what can be shown and what can't be shown because it is a sensitive document. It's not something that's gonna be up on the CCTV or someone can just come and get.
Would management will be making that screen decision?
Well, yes, what happened?
There are Florida statutes that regulate what is and is not association documents.
No, I'm talking about releasing of sensitive information contained in some security reports. Who screens whether that information is revealed to whoever is...
The Florida statute is who screens.
I have a case, my case.
It's not us. What happens is, it's very clear, association records are open to anybody who's in a unit or based on setting up an appointment, going in there at a predetermined time and reviewing the documents. However, there's certain categories of documents that are not available. Anything that has to do with attorney papers, anything that would be considered a privacy issue. That's why now we don't, you know, know all the main telephone numbers of the domain.
So sometimes information in a security report could be considered private?
Absolutely.
But who makes the decision whether to consider it private?
We would go to the statute and possibly the attorney.
Okay.
If we need to go to the attorney, if it's not clear in the statute, the attorney will give an opinion.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jason. We're gonna move on to Sales and Leasing Committee report, Francis. Thank you.
One more. Again, I noticed that this really good is wrong. One violation sent out, screens, you know, different violations. I think all, all issues should be addressed, anything that violates should be addressed.
Okay, I mean, that's fine. We think we covered most of them, but if there is extra, then...
There are some major ones, I'll take her to screen.
Okay, can we get on with the Sales and Leasing Committee reports?
Can I just ask a question, please? Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I don't live here, my daughter lives here. So forgive me if I say something that doesn't make sense or isn't appropriate for this forum. And if it isn't, you let me know. But I was a little bit concerned to hear that people are jumping the wall. And the fact that you're setting up an alarm system or a security system? And I wanted to know, and I heard that there are priorities about which, which things are gonna be done first. And in my mind, safety and security is always...
Always the top priority.
Top priority. So you have people jumping the wall and you're gonna put bougainvillas there?
Yes, that's one of the easiest, one of the easiest ways to get, jumping over the wall is to put up granary.
Okay, so my question is, in terms of, in terms of security and priority, where is that issue?
That's very high up, that one. That one is one of the top ones to be, to be, we're getting the bids for that.
And has there been any incidences of crime based upon the lack of all this, of these two security systems?
Not that I'm aware of, maybe you can answer.
I need to hear her.
Any crime or any...
Actually, no, it's mostly, you know, some of our young people are taking a shortcut home.
Okay.
That's basically what it is. We do have security out there at 3 o'clock every day watching it right now.
Okay.
I just wanted to discourage that kind of...
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. The Sales and Leasing Committee, a little over a month ago, took the initiative to go through all current leases and found that there were a number of people staying on in their units with the landlord's permission and no problem, but failing to roll over their leases so that everybody has a one-year lease. So most of the reports are very redundant. So I thought that if you don't mind, I'll kind of minimize the report. I'll announce first the building, the unit, the bedroom, and the amount without going into detail. The committee met on April 25th and took the following actions. Approved the following rollover lease agreements. Marseille 1G, one bedroom, $695. Zurich 3B, two bedrooms, $900. Bordeaux 1B, one bedroom, $750. Edelweiss 1F, one bedroom, $850. Edelweiss 2F, one bedroom, $750. Zurich 1B, one bedroom, $750. St. Moritz 1L, two bedroom, $975. Bordeaux 1Q, one bedroom, $700. Marseille 2W, two bedroom, $950. Marseille 1B, one bedroom, $750. Zurich 2I, one bedroom, $625. And we approved the following annual leases. Edelberg 2Y, one bedroom, $775. Edelweiss 3R, an efficiency unit, $675. We approved a short-term month-to-month lease of Yorkshire 2G. The unit is owned by the association and the rent is $750 a month. We approved permanent occupancy permits for Orleans 3R and Bordeaux 2T. On May 9th, the committee met again and took the following actions. Rollover agreements. St. Moritz 1S, one bedroom, $1,000. Edelberg 2H, two bedrooms, $102,000. St. Moritz 3B, one bedroom, $800. St. Moritz 1Z, two bedroom, $1,400. Grenoble 1G, one bedroom, $835. Orleans 3U, one bedroom, $835. Yorkshire 3F, one bedroom, $750. Orleans 2O, one bedroom, $750. Edelweiss 3W, two bedroom, $1,000. Orleans 3Y, one bedroom, $750. Grenoble 2M, an efficiency, $540. Interlochen 1D, one bedroom, $795. And approved the following annual leases. St. Moritz 3N, one bedroom, $950. Marseille 1U, one bedroom, $775. Grenoble 2S, one bedroom, $750. And permanent occupancy permits were approved for St. Moritz 3M and Orleans 2X. We approved the sale of Grenoble 1K, a one-bedroom unit, for $55,000. No special assessment was due. The settlement date was not set at the time of this report. The committee would appreciate a motion accepting the reports as presented and ratifying the actions of the committee.
A question.
Yes, sir.
In prior meetings, when you were close enough to provide all of the information to the directors, same thing with the minutes at the meeting, and now I see we don't have any information. Is it new policy?
No, I don't remember having done that before, but I'll be glad to. Do you, anybody ever before?
No, never.
We have the minutes here, but not the sales guys, we never have.
But I'll be very happy to do it from front row.
Yeah, I have the sales and lease, I know that.
Jerry, Jerry, I think you're right to first reject our first board meeting we had.
We had... I like it because I can't rattle on that stuff off.
No, no problem, I'll be sure to do that.
Refer, sure.
I'll do this from now on.
In fact, believe it or not, believe it or not, I don't believe it. Believe it or not, on the last meeting for this meeting, that's a month, there was nothing, we have directors back in the office. There was absolutely nothing in my box. I went there and checked it. I can't imagine in a month, there's nothing that you want to share with your fellow director and your university. I'm talking about the association, whether it's management or whether it's the board. I mean, nothing, nothing in the box.
Okay.
That's one of the questions.
That's nice, that's true.
Because you find peaceful enjoyment.
Right, well, we still like...
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Now, can we get back to, motion was made by Charles Fitzgerald Fitzpatrick. Is there a second? Thank you. Second, I call it. Are there any objections? Thank you.
Thank you, Francis. Let's move on to number nine, the sub-metering pool invoice. As Jason pointed out, it's to our advantage if we meter the pools and the cost to the association would be $1,280. Would you like to have a discussion on this? Any discussion on it? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the invoice for pool metering.
Do I have a second, Sharon will second. Any objections?
Just to conclude the amount of $1,280.
Yes, to, it should, it should not exceed $1,280. Any objections? Motion carried. Number 10, as Jason pointed out, we have a farmer, a farmer, a fire alarm system contract that is mandatory. It is now for the Grenoble building, is that correct, Jason?
That's correct.
And the amount is...
$31,000.
Yeah, show it to me, yeah, $31,300. It's money that hurts the dickens out of me, but we have no choice, it's a mandatory thing.
Plus tax and permit.
Oh, yeah, plus tax and permit, so whatever that's gonna cost us.
And would it hurt you? Would it hurt me more since my house might be...
Yeah, right. And there's a $38 a month also monitoring that has to be built on a monthly basis. However, whatever it is, it's, it's something that we have no choice. However, the board needs to, needs a vote on it anyway. Do I have a motion?
A question.
Yes.
Was there bids on that or is it just the same?
Sentry, Sentry's been in the village for a long time and I believe it was bid last year. All right, this has been an ongoing thing, Jerry?
Two years.
Two years, it's been two years, Jerry? So they bid out and they came out as the lows bid at that time.
So it is a project that it's bid on and does each building have to be serviced by the same company? Or does each building, can they have their own?
Well, apparently it has to be the same company because of the same equipment, so they're all tied together because of the phone.
Then I don't understand how there's bids.
This was done two years ago.
Right.
We got violated by the fire department two years ago. So they have been, they did it out, it was, the contract was given. They're just doing it building by building and it's, you know, and when you finish...
So then it really isn't bid, we're stuck with the company and they, I mean, if I understand it correctly, only that company is able to be working.
No, no, no.
This, this company, Sentry, right now, actually, we have two companies on property right now. The old company who gave you a higher bid that was monitoring your system and now Sentry has four of your, well, going on your fourth building because they are now taking over the monitoring for the ones they're installing.
If they won the lower bid a year and a half ago, Jerry.
Right, so now each time we need a new system in a building, we go to this, this company?
Correct.
Or we put out for bids?
No, we've already put out for bids.
I understand, for the one that we're doing now?
No, for all the buildings, they're all the same. Every building is exactly the same, $31,300.
Oh, and you have to go through...
Building by building by building. That's correct.
The business was done, this is just the next building that's getting them.
Right. And the way it was structured is that we insisted that, that the board approve each building as we go. That's all it is.
How many have you done?
We've done five.
Five, you have 11 buildings plus this building?
Right.
That's six, seven.
That's correct.
Seven times 35,000.
Yeah, it was 300, it was a $350,000 contract.
And what's the timeframe to hold?
Three years. Three years. So we have a year and a bit to go, a year and a half to complete, and we're halfway through.
And that, was that taken into consideration when we put all the money into fixing up buildings?
Yes, no. No, because it was a violation, we had no choice.
No, I don't get that, I mean, knowing it was a violation...
No, it was never, no, it was never considered, no, it was never considered, Jerry.
Did the old ones work?
I'm sorry?
Did the old ones work?
Well, it has nothing to do with the old ones or no old ones, we were violated. The fire department came in, fire marshal said, "Pool needs to be changed."
People have already been done.
Yes, we already said that, five have been done. Okay, do I have a motion on the table?
You said nothing was done, five were done.
I mean, I said...
You said, a second, please. Marvin, seconds. Any objections? Motion carried. The next thing is what Jason was talking about, change of office hours discussion. Jason would like to close the office from 12 to 1 instead of from 12:30 to 1. Not that they're extending their lunch hour, but to give them a half hour of quiet time to catch up. If any of you have come into the office on a daily basis, Sid Shulman comes in every once in a while to help us out, it does become a madhouse and everybody's entitled to at least a little bit of time to sit down and digest a lunch during the day. And, and, and our office staff for so long that I have been here just hasn't had the time to do that. And the reason why is they're just trying to catch up and they're eating at the same time. So I think it's a good policy, there's no objection. It's not gonna hurt the village, in fact, it's gonna help the village. So I think that I'd like to ask for a motion that we change the office hours from 12 to 1 instead of 12:30 to 1.
I'm going to briefly alter the office hours to 1:00, 1:20.
Do I have a second, Sharon? Any objections? Any discussion? Yes, Jerry.
Isn't it better to give them a gift hour period then?
No. They need to eat.
Also on top of that, is the legal issue, we are not... We have, we have no lunch for every, what, four hours?
No, Jerry is saying that, "Let's close the office at 5 o'clock."
So that they can tidy up their desk.
Yeah.
Which is a better time to have the quiet time? They have lots of things to do.
No, mid-morning, midday, 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 Jerry. Okay, the, the motion is carried?
No, I have a question.
Yes, you have a question, ma'am. Can you stand up, please?
In terms of emergency, would you operate on that process if you have the office open for now?
Well, there's always people in the office. It's not that we're abandoning the office. If you have an emergency, you just have to knock the door, we'll open the door. Okay? It's not that the office is gonna be empty, in fact, that's not the case.
I want to clarify one thing, which is what, what, what...
Go ahead.
It's required, but it's otherwise they're gonna be in the overtime. So that's why you need to take that one out right now.
Thank you for clarifying that, okay. Is this good? Item number 12 is, "I declare the meeting an end adjourned." Thank you very much for coming again. Good night. Good night.
You can leave the tab.
Oh, you can buy the virus too?
Yes, I am.
How are you? I need to, um... By someday, let the future come over the water.
Do you...
They have to watch you. Like you mentioned. I'm nervous.
What time does it start?
I'll call this...
You need the pen also? You need the pen?
They tear it right out.
They tear them right out. That's right. What you do. Some people have doors and some people tear walls out. Open walls, they tear walls out of a property that they own.
Phil, do you...
They tear walls.
You're a servant. So I'm a nodding...
What, you're walking around? Fifteen hours, thirty minutes. Well, I was just going to say, it could be that if they work in tile or they work wherever they put in.
No, I'm not talking about tile.
Sharon is...
I'm talking about... She's not prepared. I'm talking about water problems that we've got in the nodding cam building constantly. And we do the whole...
So what do you want back?
The house building is constantly getting...
I've got water problems.
I mean, all the buildings are the same age. They're all... They're all going to have their issues. And if you add a store, she probably deals with ten weeks.
What are the water problems that we have in the nodding cam building?
I was going to say, if you add a store, she probably has 10 weeks, a week, easily. And all the buildings go wrong. All the buildings have... They have their ones that they have to open by and then involved with the chance. They have water leakings. They have water problems. Oh, wait. You get a moment? You start... This floor is stuck back into the office. Before we reach out, which...
Jonathan, you in here?
And you're inside.
Me.[1684.24]